We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Here.
Mr. Haverly?
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Maxi?
Here.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mahalun?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
That brings us to the item three, approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to suggest any changes or an absolute that would be approved?
Remove their proof as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Takes us on its history. Then takes us to the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report is presented. We did have a few fraud checks come through again this month. And it's not internal. It's external where they'll try and replicate our check and then the bank will catch it and say that's not ours and hers. And so we have the two centers on account. We're working with the bank to see if there's anything else that we can do to kind of watch that. But we've been catching it and they've been giving our money back. But just kind of heads up like that. Something that last month came in a couple of years ago.
Tempting at my work, too. Just for a moment.
Yeah, so we're staying diligent with that, but you'll see that in the treasurer's office.
Is there a timeframe that if they didn't catch it, they give you to catch it?
There is not. Typically, we catch it, like one went through because it was our check and they just put their name on top of it. But when we balance the checkbook, that check already cashed. And so we went to the bank and said, this one's a fraud, and then they took care of it for us. So we have a good working relationship with them. We've been able to get all of that back.
Any other questions for treasurer? That brings us to the superintendency report.
Tonight, we would like to recognize our state scholars. I don't see any of them here, but we will name them and honor them, and then we will get the certificates to the students at the high school. They are Carissa Endicott, Kaylee Ford, Matthew McGovern, Robin Willard, and Emma Zimmerman. And then second, we would like to recognize our competition cheer team for their success in state competition. And they are Jenna Shattuck, Emma Blazinski, Miranda Wagner, Emma Ford, Samantha Becker, Jaylen Hawkins, Olivia Topping, Deanna Masek, Justina Goings, Jonah Brishon, Kenzie Demon, Brianna Walters, and Emily Pike. And our coaches are Kim Croll and Crystal Joel. And my apologies to anyone whose name I missed. So job well done by our students. That's it?
That's it?
That's it? Yeah. I do have an update on Mike. We had an opportunity to speak with him this afternoon. He acknowledged that he had no idea going into this what he would feel like coming out. And he said it was just two days ago that he started feeling human again. And now he's up and about. He's doing some things for himself and he's working very hard to build his stamina. But he sounded good. He sounded like himself. Didn't say he was ready to come back. But it was good to speak with him. And he said that we could share. It was Melissa and I who were on the phone with him. And he said that we could share that information with you tonight. So thank you.
Well, that takes us to the committee reports. Policy?
We are meeting on the 26th, and we've got a big stack of policies to go through. So I'll have an update at the next meeting.
Business services? We have not yet. We do not have a meeting planned. Facilities and law and arts?
We didn't meet either. We don't have any external. The plan is, I think, when Mike gets back to finalize some of the work, to get that on potentially in the March meeting.
And that should still be assigned by the government or something?
Depending on how fast Mike gets back.
CIA committee?
We did meet. Not this Wednesday, but the last Wednesday. And we had a chance. It was a meeting focused. Carrie brought a modified document from the CDC, which let us work through our parent and community engagement with our curriculum, both in review internally and externally. So we have a chance to go through a whole battery of questions about our current process and our current communication at all levels and engagement with our curriculum. And I think it was a very productive session. And the goal being that we're looking for a better understanding of what our current practice is, as well as how we can engage better and unify kind of district parents with our curriculum, especially our parental community engagements. That was the main thing. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, that's all we had on the agenda for that time. At our next meeting, I let the committee know that at our next meeting, I will be bringing a recommendation from our fifth through eighth grade teachers for a resource adoption for English Language Arts. So we just are beginning piloting a Houghton-Mifflin resource right now, and then we're also going to pilot Pearson. And then, so in April, I plan to bring their recommendation to the curriculum committee and then to the board in May. So we're very excited.
And that does leave us our next meeting on April 20.
Then takes us to our consent agenda. And I would like a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 21st, 2020. Personnel, NBYS contract, group eight program requests for NBS, addition of paraprofessionals at upper elementary, contract with Love Your Classroom LLC, and contract with Autism on Support Services.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes. This takes us to unfinished business. Item A, I believe, this is going to be just a discussion only.
Just a discussion only. Yes. Mr. Haverly asked that we discuss and provide any input that you have regarding what I call logistics for a board retreat. Specifically, when we can take these one at a time, if you have any ideas regarding where you would like to hold a board retreat. I'll go through them first. What day of the week would work best and what timeframe during a particular day of the week? What topics that you would like to generate for that agenda? And probably the most important one is what are your refreshment preferences? So we can take them in order. If you have any input, I'll collect the input and pass it along to Mr. Haverly about where.
I responded to Joe's email. My request or my preference, I think, would be to go to one of the conference centers in Hartford. It has access to go dining in conference center with audio visuals. Gets us away from here. Gets us in a little bit more professional environment to have conversations and potentially to move between rooms. It also takes the responsibility of some district staff to have to provide snacks and capability open and stuff for us. We can have that done for us. And then we can schedule having presentations and stuff done so we can make use of people's time.
Other input on location? I don't have my curriculum specialist check my wait time. Day or days of the week that would work well and timeframe within those days?
I guess I kind of had a question, and since you and Joe were kind of, you know, looking at this, I think you, as a board, had a couple of these right tonight, a board retreat. Is that what you would call the one that we had?
No, we've had self-evaluations, but we've never done a board retreat. We've done voice self-evaluations, which are a little different.
And then is it your understanding that these types of meetings, unlike the self-evaluation, it has to be a posted meeting? What was your, as you thought through this, and what was your idea?
About the topics?
Day of the week? Well, around the day of the week.
I can, I mean, I can really be open. I mean, obviously, for us, it'd work during the week. Saturday would be easier, but I realize that we're going to need administrative staff and that might not be accommodating for them. So, I mean, I would be willing to take a day off to accommodate the group, you know, make something happen.
Do you think you could accomplish it in a single evening? Or do you think it would be more?
I don't see us doing this in a evening.
A single day? Like if it was on a Saturday, it could be done in a single? So then as a group, what do we think about either a single Saturday or a couple of evenings? Do you think in two different weeks?
If I was going to come into it, I'd just like to get in that hole and get the work done.
So back to back?
If it's going to be during the week, I'd just just take the entire day off.
And then from a calendar perspective, it's?
The force print money.
Can we, as a board, pool our available March Saturdays together? Just so that we can see maybe what we can do with this. I don't even know if that is happening right now, but. What administrators are we looking to have here? Principles, principals, coordinators? So we'll make sure they're available and what works for them, too, because everything's going to be tough.
So then, just to go on that, Carl, if we, as a board, and the target administrators were to get some Saturdays that would and would not work in March, that's as late as you want to know as March? If you were trying to stay out of the first?
It was in mid-April.
April 1st.
April 1st.
Okay. We're going to be planning by the time of April. Do we want to, as a fallback, you know, have a couple of days during the weekend as well that would work for people? And it could be a preference for a weekend, if that's what you want, but then a fallback to that and kind of just see where it goes.
And like I said, with enough noise, I'm not going to take an entire day off to accommodate the group. So I don't, I'm not expecting everybody to refer, but I hope much of that as well.
I would take a day off, too.
Yeah. I probably would take a day off. My weekends are just as bad as weekday, honestly.
Do we have a day in March when we expect Mike to be back? Or is there a day that we would want to go after that?
He, in our conversation today, he said they originally projected typically as a four, four-week timeframe. And help me, Melissa, he was counting by next, a week from tomorrow was going to be three weeks?
Two weeks.
Two, two weeks. So then the first week in March would be?
Oh, yes. This is the second week.
Yeah.
So this week is three weeks.
Three weeks. So by the first week in March, by Wednesday of that week would officially be his fourth week. So end of the first week in March, if not for sure, the second week in March is what he doubts about today.
For a posted meeting, how early do we have to post it? Where do we go with that?
So would you like to send out that email?
Sure, sure.
And then, I guess, take a guess at the administrative staff that you?
Okay.
That we want to have their principles involved in that.
Maybe have people just send in days that they absolutely are not available.
Yeah, yeah.
And then pick a day that seems like?
Yeah, okay. Will do.
That was the topic. All right, then it's just the topics?
Yeah, topics.
So on topics, I know we got an email that we weren't supposed to share. I'll honor that. Maybe we just share it with Joe. You know, if we got specific stuff, I mean, I gave Joe an extensive list in my email and I copied to him. And maybe we just handle it that way.
So get topics back to Joe? All right.
I think if there's anything, the principals or administrators want to add to that, too, please edit that kind of mail so we can address it.
And I would think maybe by email, we could share the same. If you have a preference or refreshments and things like that, or group types, we could share that as well. Also, that's a pretty easy goal. Does that sound like that topics covered? Is there more things that we need to talk about?
That I can think of?
Good. And that takes us to new business. Item A is February 2020 bills.
Make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second. Motion in the second. Would anyone like to discuss anything with bills? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
And that takes us to item B, approval of registration fees 2020 to 2021.
Okay. So I have a PowerPoint here that just runs through registration fees, transportation fees, and lunch fees. And then each one is a different vote, but just kind of the general information I have is one piece. So our student fees this year, we'll do, obviously, lunch and transportation, and then I'll give you an update on outstanding fees. So right now, our outstanding fees, as you can see, from February 2020, the last bar down there, we're at about $64,000. It has jumped up a little bit from last year at this time. That's from July, as you can see, kind of in line with last year. Our registration fee collection got pushed this year because of online registration. So we went to all new online taking fees, and all of that just got pushed down the road a little bit. And so I'm not shocked to see that we're a little bit higher right now, just because we're trying to get that process kind of nailed on a little bit in place. But I've gotten some really great feedback from the online fee, using it, from our secretaries, from some of our parents and stuff. So that seems to be working, working well. By grade, you can see half of our fees are ninth through 12th, which is pretty typical. You know, sometimes we collect those fees as we go. Pre-K through six is about 30%, and then the seventh and eighth is about 19, 20%. Most of our fees in the district are under $100. So the red and the blue is all under $100. So most of our families, it's just maybe this year's registration or that lost report card. It's a doubt. You know, it's just some simple things, maybe some lunch fees, stuff like that. We do have about, just that orange or the yellow and green is over $100. So most of our fees are fairly low. So recommendations for this coming school year, oh, sorry, fees collected so far, you can kind of see where we've collected, about $108,000, 17, 18, 96 in 18, 19, and then so far this year, about $35,000 that we've collected. My recommendation is to keep the fees the same. Right now, we have the fee set, and then if they register before a certain date, they get their fees back down $25. And so this year, I'm recommending that we have it as a June 12th date. We are rolling out registration for all students middle of March. So I'm hoping that that June 12th date, that will be parents' incentive to register, pay your fees before our secretaries go home for the summer. So that's why I picked that June 12th date and then to continue to use the funds for payments. Any questions on registration before I move on to lunch? So lunch fees, this is the only area that there's potential raise in. So 17, 18, about $206,000. 18, 19, about $199,000. And so far this year, we're at about $107,000. So we're trying to get, it seems like a little bit higher than we have in the past, but... So based upon recommendation from our SB audit and our financial audit, they want us to raise our lunch prices by 25 cents. So students would go from $2.75 to $3, and adults would go from $3.25 to $3.50. Any questions on that?
So with lunch fees, we, for the registration fees, we cut the fees. So if you like, get one, or that hurts our revenue side. But with this, our lunch fees keep going up and our revenues keep coming down. Any conversations about why?
Well, part of it is there was a year where they changed the way that the students that are considered free to reduce were calculated. And so there was, most of the time, there was like this wide span of children that were in this pot. And then one year, they took away Medicaid or something, and so our number of free reduced changed. And then the next year, so I think sometimes that can play an impact on the revenue we're bringing in, because if there's more kids free and reduced, that's less revenue we're bringing in from paid, but we're getting more from federal and state sources. So I think the sourcing is changing. If you're speaking to like meals served, I can't speak to what that looks like based on those numbers, because it could be more students versus, you know, adults, but I can check if it really happened, too.
I was just curious about whether you knew whether the number of lunches was staying consistent, and it was just like you said, there's a lot of rolling numbers around, or whether a number of kids taking advantage of the product is gradually sinking, what we potentially need to improve.
Okay. Yeah, what's that? It's huge. Yeah, but I can do a little bit of that and see and just maybe put it in this report if you're happy or whatever. And then transportation, we do have the paid transportation fees. There wasn't any information out there on that every year. And last year, we moved to, so paid transportation is for students that live where they don't qualify for the transportation. So it's usually within a mile and a half. Last year, we kind of moved to a different way of filling paid transportation, where we waited until all of our buses were filled and running, schools in session, and then we reached out to those parents that wanted paid transportation and said, yes, we have the amount of buses, or no, we do not. And so the only change that I made to the paid transportation was that the parents had to pay by October 1st to get the reduced rate, as opposed to, I think it was August 1st before. But we hadn't even let parents know if they were in the ability to see on the bus by August 1st. So I just bumped that to October 1st. But otherwise, the fees on there, I think, have to see. And I'm planning on doing the same process this year. We're going to start, we're going to fill our buses, fill our routes with the kids that we have to transport. And then if there's some room, then we will take some of those paid transport orders.
I know we incorporated bringing the K for kids and some of those. Have there been conversations about what we can do?
There has not. Well, there, yes, there has and there hasn't. We're waiting to see what the hazardous comes back at, to see where that's at. But that's something that we need to talk about personally, what that would look like. I know it would depend on drivers and all of that, too, but we can definitely make a position.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions on fees? Okay.
So that takes us to, I guess, three items in a row here. These have to be separate.
Yes, yeah.
So we'll start with the item B, the approval of the registration fees for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Make a motion that we approve the registration fees for the 2021 school year as presented.
Second. Is there any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Item C, approval of the 2020, 2021 lunch and hour prices.
Make a motion that we approve the lunch fees as presented for the 2021 school year.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
And that takes us to item D, approval of the 2020, 2021 transportation fees.
Make a motion that we approve the transportation fees for the 2021 school year as presented.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalun?
Yes.
Takes us to item E, approval of the school calendar.
That's me. Mike actually put a draft calendar together right before he left. And at the January, early January administrative team meeting, he presented the draft and got administrative feedback, and some changes were made based on that. And then it was sent to the NDEA, and the president of the NDEA worked with her membership to get feedback, and we got some, we got some, we got some good, some very good feedback that resulted in some changes. So really, this is a, I think it's probably built after, kind of modeled initially after this year's calendar, and then was tweaked by input from the administration and from the teachers.
So I got some feedback on this, too, particularly the week in January, where we have presidents that Martin Luther King's day off on the 18th, come back to school for a day and have a late start on a Wednesday. Apparently, that didn't go that great this year. And the staff that addressed that concern with me was just, if we move the late start back one week, so we don't come off the president, we already have a break, you know, for a while, and he come back, and then that whole week seemed like it was a waste. So throwing it out there for special, I miss no reason to roll up a calendar, took one date for a late start, but.
That feedback was actually brought up by the administration, and they fell into two camps. One is, I mean, half and half into two camps. And one is, a week is already shorter, you might as well just add, you know, might as well just, it's already, you kind of disrupted, put all the disruption in one week. And the other half said exactly the kind of feedback you were getting, you know, let's, you know, a week is already disrupted, let's not disrupt it again. So what we did, that occurred two times in the calendar. And so we left the January one the way it was, and the April one, we moved. So that's, that was a compromise. That was a compromise, yes.
Has there been any discussion about increasing the frequency of the late start days?
I'm going to have to defer to, well, we have talked about that. And actually, this next calendar has five for next year, so we added one. This year, we only had four. And so, yes, I mean, that has come up, and we're looking at ways that we could hopefully continue to expand upon that. But we thought maybe just adding one in the next year would be a nice, you know, way to add one more. But it was discussed, because I think the more that we do it, the better we'll get at it, and it provides our teachers those opportunities to collaborate, you know, around teaching and learning, which is so important.
I had a little anecdotal feedback that the quarterly schedule was a little hard to track. And so if we're planning on something that was regular monthly, then that might make it a little easier to plan on those schedules.
Yeah. And that, we did talk about that came up a little bit at the principals' meeting, too. You know, like eventually, if it is monthly, if it's always, we're not quite there yet. You know, if it's always the second Wednesday of the month, then everybody knows it's that Wednesday, and everyone can plan for it, you know, that kind of thing. And it's not quite there yet, but that did come up as we moved forward.
Something that I wondered about, and I think as it came up maybe the last time that we said, it's kind of a side conversation in our facilities meeting, is the rationale that we continue to start school as early as? in our facilities meeting, is the rationale that we continue to start school as early as we do? And what the mindset is or what the thought behind it? And I'll just go back to this. What I hear against it is in a district where we don't have a lot of air-conditioned buildings, starting in that timeframe and especially in the grades and having that situation. And years ago when we moved it to that, the original discussion point or the original positive point that I heard was it helps with the high school classes and exam schedules. But that's, so I hear one positive from the building academically that also has air conditioning. And I might hear it on the other. And it's a real cost. I know when we looked at our electric bills and you look at what we paid for electric bills in the, in the end of August and September. And I just, I guess I haven't, I hear us bring it up, but I don't know if I've heard like the back and forth, the pros and cons to where, you know, the building principals that have kids in those buildings that don't have it. And I think how it came up in the facility meeting was the effect of having window unit air conditioners plugged in and do we have power resources for it? And you may not need that kind of thing if you didn't have it. So I, and I guess I'm not hearing it again in this schedule. We bring it up maybe in a committee that doesn't have jurisdiction over the school calendar, but it doesn't kind of work its way back around and hear an input back as to...
And I think the other thing that complicates it is that we're two and a half miles from where they are. We're a little bit far from going to school for their, right? Based on how make it work and make it work very well in the state of Wisconsin. But here it's too complicated for us to do. I think that's what we should, what we should...
I can share that many districts went to earlier and earlier starts in August at the time that the state testing was initiated. And it was, the driving force was to get as many instructional days in before the mandatory state testing, which at that time was, what, the second week in March or something? So that's the reason many districts pushed it up. And then there was a lot of follow the leader, I'm sure.
And then the Rockford went back to after late restart this year.
And sometime, and I don't know, I don't know why, and maybe Carrie does, but there were times that when you've got construction going on, you're building new buildings, then you bump it back to get your school open. I don't know if that was their reason, but...
Some of it had to do with the air conditioning because they, many schools that don't have air conditioning. Also being a very large urban district, they get a lot of students from Chicago Public Schools who do not start until later. And so, you know, where people move out and then they just don't come to school for two weeks because they think school doesn't start, you know, or some of those kinds of, so that was, there was multiple factors. But I do know they also shortened winter break and some other days off and took those off the calendar in order to get more instructional days in before testing and all of that. So there were some, they started later, but they had a much shorter winter break as well. I think if you ask their teachers, they were not happy about that. I'll just comment from being a parent of children in the Rockford Public Schools. My children weren't happy about that either. Yeah, I'm sure they're not happy about that too.
We've had one institute day this year where during the school year, they had institute days before the school year.
They also did that.
They just had one, but otherwise they've had like no days off so that they get out earlier.
Yes.
So they get out at normal time in June there.
Yeah.
But it also gives them a lot of instructional days. So it'd be, I think, what I'm like hearing, Carrie, that's a big calendar overhaul.
It was a very big calendar overhaul for them this year.
So I think what me and Tom are asking is, are those conversations that we're having?
I mean, this year I don't, around the table, we did not talk about changing the start date. That didn't come up.
The only thing that was brought up about the start date is that the fair is a little bit later this year. So that, that did push us up, I think, a week later than last year.
To make sure we're after the fair. So, I mean, which makes sense. I mean, so we need to be after the fair. So it's, so I know that was talked about, but not pushing it any later. That was not brought up.
I know one of the problems I had as a parent when we first switched to this calendar, where we started earlier, was that my daughter was going to school out of state. I ended up driving her by myself down to Texas, moving her into the second floor apartment by myself because my husband had to stay home because the boys had to go to school. And then drive home from Texas, again, alone. And it was, that was kind of a struggle and the boys had to start school with Dan, who's also fine. So I don't know if any other parents have had that problem with, you know, your kid's going to school kind of far away to college because colleges start. And it, because the year before, when she went her freshman year, we all went down. And then we couldn't because the boys needed to go to school before we'd get back.
I guess this would be something for us to discuss with the superintendent or to, for next year.
All right, next year.
But I, I really, in things like this, I like for the board, I like for the administration just to take a look at it and just challenge, you know, why are we doing this? What is, is there a good reason behind it? What do the parents think? I mean, ultimately, if there's, you know, if it kind of goes on both sides, you can make it work. Then I would think in our district, in the way it's configured, it would, it would make sense to maybe not put them in school in those real hot days in summer if you could pull off. But that can be another...
I'll leave it in the red folder that I have on my desk that's for Dr. Greenland. I figured he'd find it, he couldn't miss it.
So we have a school calendar here. Is there any other discussion on it or do we, would you like to make a motion to approve it? We moved up to the rest of the sound.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any more discussion? Role call please.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Macey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Rudi?
Yes.
And then that takes us to item A, approval of Internet Fiber Optic Connectivity Project. Jerry, I think that's...
So I'm going to start us and then Jerry's going to correct. So the Internet Fiber Optic Connectivity Project, this has kind of been in the works for a little bit, but there were so many unknowns that we weren't really sure if the state and everybody was going to pull through and actually get this off the ground. But they did, kind of last minute, but they did. So what it is, is it's an E-Rate, which we already get some funding from E-Rate. That's a federal program and a state grant to provide fiber optic connectivity to our school districts. So we're seeking approval for this project, but we're only seeking approval if the E-Rate and the state funding both permit. So right now E-Rate's projected at seventy percent and the state match is at thirty percent. And what this will do is it'll provide the initial fiber optics work for our district so that we can get higher speed internet and that we can connect our, our schools. So the goal of the project is to bring that high-speed fiber optic WAN network and internet connections from our main campuses to all of our elementary campuses. It'll also future-proof our internet with installation of fiber optics, kind of bringing up to some of those FCC codes that we need. And over the next couple of years, it will also reduce our costs that we're currently paying for internet on our bandwidth. So the project outline, there's kind of two projects to this. The one of them is running that fiber optic network connections between our main campus and all of our elementary campuses. And the other piece of it is bringing in high-speed internet connections to our main campus. So it's kind of a dual smoke process. So I'll let Jerry kind of run through this map. You can see where our hub is in the middle, the big green one there. And this is kind of what that fiber optics will do. The green will be bringing it out to the elementary. It'll be buried line, so that should be, and then the red is bringing that higher speed internet into our, our main hub at the district level.
Do you feel it?
Okay. The project cost, so to do this out of our pocket, if we called people and said we want this done, would be about six hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars. So it's a huge chunk of change. The total cost to North Boone, if E-Rate and the state matching grant come through, would be no upfront out-of-pocket cost. So they would do the project. And that's why ISB is teeming up with E-Rate is to provide. And we're considered a school district that is...
Underserved.
Underserved, thank you. Because of our internet connectivity, there's just not a lot out here, right? So we're considered underserved, so that's part of, you know, us being able to get access to this grant. Our agreement that the state projects will not start unless we have more approval and that both grants are approved. So we would not do anything unless obviously both of those grants were approved for the funding. The internet cost, that's the ongoing piece of it after all of the fiber is laid. It's a three-year contact, contract for the internet and it's a five-year contract with the WAN, for the WAN. Yearly internet and after the E-Rate discount would be about sixteen thousand. And that potentially down to eight thousand. Right now we're around twenty thousand a year for internet. So for the next few years, that would definitely bring our prices down having those fiber optics and those, that extra internet there. Any questions on that project?
So what does that, what's the change then from our current costs for internet service?
Right now it's about twenty thousand. And it would go down to sixteen, potentially down to eight. And Jerry's working with the vendors right now to see if they can bring it down even lower. But we would, we would save those first couple of years, about four thousand dollars.
Is this infrastructure exclusively our usage? Or does this benefit any of the community that's along the proposed routes?
Potentially any of the community that we hear. But we do have our, our piece that we have rights to.
Can you go into a little bit more like where these numbers came from? Or who is actually would own the fiber or who's putting the fiber and kind of how that...
We wouldn't own the fiber. E-Rate doesn't allow us to own pieces of the network. The reason for that is because they want it to be upgradable in the future. They want us to be stuck with old infrastructure. So if we don't own it, they think that, you know, the people that were paying will upgrade it through their program. No one's just asking a question.
I guess what I'm, is this part of iFiber? The Northern Illinois?
No, this is regional. Through MapleNet Wireless. They were a little bit closer to it.
So this actually, you're, this went up or a...
RFB.
RFB for this?
Through the E-Rate to what's there?
So our E-Rate vendor, they, they do the legwork for the school district essentially. And that's kind of their, their piece of the pie. You know, they, they help, they know that all the federal, because when you have federal grants, it's not the laws are much greater, much different, all that stuff. And so they, they help us walk through this process. So when they knew it was coming out, they kind of helped us lay some of that groundwork to say, is this even feasible for North Boone? Is this something that we're even going to be able to access and all of that? And so Jerry's done a lot, like worked to see if this was something we could do.
Jerry, this also incorporates internal hardware upgrades as needed for supporting the new fiber infrastructure.
Not yet. We're hoping that we'll be here to plan for us. We want to take advantage of this while it's out. So that's what I'm, I'm excited for this year.
Would all our buildings need to be upgraded then to take advantage of this speed? Or any of our buildings have capabilities now?
Right now this campus is all fiber. The problem was all the campuses that are far away from us are elementary campuses. They're taken through microwave internet and we're picking up those connections. So we wanted to use this to...
This is kind of a place that the project at this moment without putting in front of the committee. So can you share with the group how we currently get internet access?
Currently get internet access through iFiber, through a microwave tower that goes to the Delta Year Courthouse. This new project would use that existing connection and also get fiber optic internet from a provider on what's up. So we have two internet connections that give us seven hundred megabytes per second. So right now we have two hundred megabytes per second, which would come to another five hundred.
Yeah, so then we've got the current microwave towers set up for us.
We would still use them, so we'd have two different internet connections in case we would go down. We still have that other one working. But there is another program, do an IT program through the ICN down in Springfield that I'm going to try to apply for again next year. So I'm going to get rid of that tower. Or we'd keep the tower, get rid of the connection going to Delta Year. And they already told me we could have the tower if we want to use it for the loss radius.
So then we would be putting routing equipment in that would be able to switch back and forth between either the broadband system or the fiber optic?
Next year they're both beyond at the same time. Because that's what the E-Rate rules require is that they're both connections around and have backup connections later on. So they'd both be available to use through some box that they're providing us with.
So would there be a way then to pull backup power into the fiber optic system so that voice-over IP phones don't collapse when there's power?
You can't run through power, power through the fiber optics, but there's, we have some battery backups in the E-Rate network too that'll help with that.
Can you go in a little bit more detail on that? Is that...
We lose phones all the time.
I mean, maybe the group does not, or doesn't understand that. When you have voice-over IP phones and you lose power, you guys can't communicate with anybody. There's no communication with parents, there's no communication between schools. I guess while we talk about projects of this scope, I would hope that some, we know that that's been the hope. And our security piece for a long time, you know, whether it's putting generators in places, key places so that can keep this thing up and running. But my understanding was that fiber optic doesn't rely on power at the source to stay running, right?
Well, there still needs power to route it.
Have those, any of those.
Yeah, both of those.
But you would have to have them both then.
We need to have all phones? Yeah. Because it has to decipher the colors to back to the IP.
Would this, can I ask, would you mind? Would this help, like at Manchester, we lose our phones all, I don't know, this might be completely separate, phones all the time and we end up having Frontier come out. I mean, would that help support that's Frontier wouldn't have to be coming out?
With this, with this type of reliable connection, we could definitely do like a hosted service through our hub instead of you having to have your local sources that go down all the time.
Right.
So definitely give us more reliable technology to use something that's, you know, not in the area.
Jerry, can we back up just a little bit? Back to Ed's question. You mentioned in the six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar cost you're asking about, some extra backup power was part of that proposal?
It's not a part of that proposal, but there's two different categories of E-Rate. There's category one, which is like the internet and the WAN, like the connection and stuff. And then there's the network pieces like switches and battery backups and like all the physical hardware pieces that are inside your building that make the network work. Those are under the category two part of E-Rate. And we did have some upgraded power backup system within that. I mean, nothing that's going to keep it on for, you know, a day, but it'd probably at least a half an hour or more for all those buildings. No generator, but...
So the proposal that you put together is essentially all in that category two and doesn't cover anything in category three?
This proposal's category one.
This one, okay.
Category two is a different one that we still get in all of this.
So this proposal would take these new fiber connections and where would it tie into this campus then?
At the middle school, that's our hub.
The hub is at the middle school and there is no decent backup power to there?
No, unfortunately not.
Big, big batteries though.
We do have the capability to tie the generator that's by the old bus farm into another school. There is a conduit that runs between those two buildings. So we could bring emergency power to it.
Which would go a long ways towards keeping your voice-over IP and all that kind of stuff. So that's right. Okay. So I guess what I'm kind of missing in this too is I'm not sure, like how a proposal like this, this in my view should have gone up through a committee. Because what clearly, what I am missing on this is that I, I get the part and it would seem like you would want to pursue this. I mean, it's, it's where we want to go for connections. But then there's a lot of stuff that to me would be almost year one that you would need to buy the hardware to bring, to get all, you know, copper and put fiber in out at your outbuildings and things like that, that you're trying to get this money for. But what if you don't? Or what, what are we looking at for capital expenditures there? And so I...
We're at a good spot in that.
Well, we're at a good spot now as far as the students using it next year. As far as, you know, like going from fiber to copper, they provide all of those pieces for us. But yeah, next year, probably going to see some heavy upgrades within the buildings as far as core network equipment for next year.
Typically, we would have brought this to a committee. It was just that it dropped, you know, from the state, an E-Rate, it kind of dropped on us and it was like, here's this, this opportunity's really going to happen. And so we thought we'd bring it to the board and just say, this is coming, you know, kind of getting the feedback from, from where we're at of it, so.
It would be nice to see outside of the, this proposal's presentation. I, I don't want to nitpick the granularity of hardware, although I'm curious about what you more detailed, probably, probably what the proposal that you've already put together looks like. So I would be interested in seeing that. I don't know where it fits at the committee level necessarily, but that information could be the right for the board. And then it would be really useful to see what that, if this is successful, what that future ahead plan looks like for the details of what infrastructure upgrades you need that might be coming down the line, whether or not that's already covered in your anticipated technology budget requests or whether these are going to be expenses that the board should back.
We would definitely tell you about them, but they would be within that 70% off E-Rate category two itemized list that we would put it to you.
Don't forget.
It would be, you know, huge out-of-budget type expenditures that we'd ask for.
And I could really see that if you're ready for anybody on this path, like putting generators at both Manchester and Capren to be able to keep their technologies alive no matter what happens from a weather sample. It's not going to really be that much more expensive on project than gas, fire, natural gas, generators, propane generators are not that expensive anymore. Emergency hangup so that they fall into emergency mode and data. But I do think that that's something that if we're successful, I agree that that needs to come back through some committees and we need to have some discussions about how we can tie some security concerns in so if this project gets a real bank or a buck.
I'll check to see if gas generators are included in the category two. I've never asked for, I've only ever asked for the, the battery operating ones, but I'll ask.
Even if they're not, I mean, I, I'd be passionate enough about it. I've been around here long enough, from Manchester to Capren, somebody saw this, who's wanting power, they don't have phones, so parents are trying to get a little chance, and it's a season.
And the power fluctuates so much out here that it wrecks the UPS systems, like the last one that was in, say, Manchester, was probably a year and a half old when all the batteries blew out of it. So it's, it's a whole other world out here if it comes to not dricking with the technology. Yeah. So yeah, we're definitely interested in the generator intact.
So what committee would you, would the board like to see this run through or get on the next agenda for facilities that doesn't involve?
I would say, yeah.
Jerry, where's the?
We kind of need to vote on this tonight.
Yeah. I think as for the other stuff.
Oh, the other stuff, oh, yeah.
Absolutely taking advantage of this.
The following year.
Coming for it.
We definitely, yeah, we'd vote for you guys pretty definitely.
Well, there's just two layers here in that, taking advantage of this and voting on this in a timely fashion, I think we understand that. But there's also how this has come before the board, again, expedited needs noted and then thinking about what we're planning for ahead. I don't know, I personally feel like the technology plans, we've harped a little bit on this as a board in the past, but sometimes the, which committee that comes to and where the requests are made to and how we're planning for future needs, it's a little unclear as far as where that tech actually falls. So I think being a bit explicit about making sure that even on the next facilities agenda, that there's a note added about being able to talk about it and need to pack or. Are you joining?
So we'll find on that for a future committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve the fiber optic connectivity project as presented.
Motion second.
Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Kinser?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayfield?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
That takes us down to item 11, executive session. We have one item we want to executive session for. And that is for the appointment, make a motion for the board to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of a specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including Eric Tesnoli, on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine his validity. Someone? Second. Make a motion, second. Roll call please.
Mrs. Mayfield?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Kinser?
Yes.
Two, three, two.
Have a motion to come back into open session.
Make a motion, we come back into open session.
Second. All in paper.
Aye.
No other business to come before the board or a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second. All in paper.
Aye.
You guys have a good night.
Thank you.